All right, well, welcome, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order, so if you could please rise for the pledge of allegiance. And maybe we could have one of our wonderful firemen that are here this evening do our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have our invocation, our fire chaplain, Mark Childers will be doing that this evening. You can pull that, yeah, thank you.
Please bow your heads as we seeks God's blessing. Father, I ask that you would grace us with your presence, that you give our leaders here the ability, Lord, to see into the future, to make great decisions for our wonderful city. I pray, Lord, that you would encourage them and lead them and guide them, give them the wisdom that they need from above. And it is in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Okay, if the council could please join me and, I'm sorry, oh, I forgot all about that. I'm so excited, I want to get down to business. Yes, roll call, please.
The minister will reflect, Councilmember Musgrove is not here this evening. Councilmember Nunez?
Present.
Councilmember LeBlanc?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Sinella?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here, all right, let's go, I'm excited. And our chief will, there he is.
All right, good evening. Before we continue, I ask that we pause for a moment of silence. Today, we celebrate the achievements of our new badge recipients, but we must also honor and remember those who have the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. Their courage and devotion to protecting others will never be forgotten. In particular, our thoughts and prayers are with family and friends and colleagues of fire engineer Rob Hager of North County Fire Department, whose recent passing has felt deeply across our fire service family. His legacy in service and dedication will live on through all of us who continue this noble calling. Please join me now in a moment of silence to honor all fallen firefighters, law enforcement, military personnel, and especially for our friend, fire engineer Hager. Thank you. Is engineer Ryan Mackey here? David, are you coming up to speak on behalf of Ryan? Impromptu?
Yeah.
We would like our Fire Association Vice President David Pauley just to say a few things. Sorry for the impromptu, but I, okay, he's on a medical aid, he didn't forget. He's running calls.
Good evening, on behalf of the San Marcos Professional Firefighters Association, thank you. Thank you all for being here, this is a pretty special moment for a pretty special fire department, for a pretty special city. So, we'll all take this in, we enjoy our families very, very much, because we take our families very, very much, very seriously. So, thank you, enjoy the evening, bask in the moment. Congratulations to everyone that's been pinned. And again, on behalf of the San Marcos Professional Firefighters Association, thank you for being here.
Thanks, David. Good evening, Mayor Jones, Deputy Sinella, Councilmember Nunez, Councilmember LeBlanc, thank you for having us. And good evening to everyone, my name is Fire Chief Dan Barron. On behalf of the City of San Marcos, I want to welcome you to this very special occasion, our badge ceremony to our newest members and promotions of individuals that have worked tirelessly hard to get to where they are today. Today, we honor not only the accomplishments of these dedicated men and women, but also the values, service, and courage and commitment that the badge represents. I'd like to take a moment to recognize our city leadership, our fire command staff, our brothers and sisters in public safety, and most importantly, the families and loved ones who stand proudly behind all of us as firefighters. Your support is what makes this profession happen. Meaning of the badge, the badge is not just a symbol of authority, it's a promise to protect lives, to serve the community with integrity, and to stand ready in times of crisis. Every firefighter who wears this badge carries within the legacy of those who came before and the responsibility to uphold the highest standards of service. To our badge recipients, our firefighters, today, you have endured the rigorous training, tested your limits, and proven yourselves ready for the challenge of this noble profession. From this moment forward, you are part of the family, one bound not just by duty, but by trust, sacrifice, and remember, the work that you do changes lives every day. To the families, we know this journey isn't just theirs, it's yours as well. You share in the long hours, the sleepless nights, sacrifices, and the worries that come with this calling. Please know that you too are part of the San Marcos Fire Department family. Your support is a strength that helps our firefighters serve. As each badge is pinned today, let it be a reminder of courage, service, and community. To our new badge recipients, wear it with pride, honor it with your actions, and know that you will never stand alone. Congratulations and welcome to the City of San Marcos Fire Department. We would, beginning with Division Chief Fire Marshal Jason Naylin, but he's in Hawaii, so we're going to skip him because he's having too much fun. So, we'll start with our fire captain Andrew Villante and wife Taryn, will you come up here? Fire engineer Jordan Ray and fiance Lindsay and daughter Emma Lynn. Fire engineer Blake Swift, wife Becca. Firefighter paramedic Mitchell Adams, girlfriend Malia. Firefighter paramedic Drake Booten, wife Rena. Firefighter paramedic Rory Cox and wife Jessica. I may embarrass Richie a little bit right now, but Richie was supposed to have his badge last year, but he was, he fell to some illness, so he wasn't at the last badge presentation. So, we're going to honor him today. So, firefighter paramedic Richard Lemus, I'm sorry, and his mom Miriam, excuse me. Firefighter paramedic Devin McKesson, and I get the privilege to badge Devin. Firefighter paramedic Garrett Thompson and his dad, John Thompson. Firefighter paramedic Brody Traer and wife Amber. EMT Ethan Rodriguez, can I get the luxury of? Our fire department chaplain, Mark Childers. Fire inspector Lauren Corson and her husband Eric. And probably our most well behaved employee, our peer support K-9 Sawyer. And his captain Sandy Fast. I have a couple other recognitions. First being one of our retired fire captains, Rick Connor. He is actually listening to the retirement policy that goes along with retiring. He's actually enjoying it and doesn't feel like he should be here, so. No, I just, he is on vacation, but we are going to provide him with a proclamation. But Rick served 35 years in the fire service, 25 years with the City of San Marcos. He began his career with us in 1999, and he retired last December of 2024. And Rick left a large piece of him with all of us that we can carry, that professionalism, that mentorship. And we really appreciate Rick and we hope that he enjoys retirement life, so. With that said, I have a couple other recognitions. I would ask that I bring up Captain John Thompson, engineer Ian Osterberg, and firefighter Kellen Broach. Come on up. Oh, I'm sorry, and Brandon Petty, firefighter Brandon Petty. Sorry, Brandon. We want to, we want to take a moment to recognize the incredible bravery of Captain John Thompson, engineer Ian Osterberg, and firefighter paramedic Kellen Broach, and firefighter paramedic Brandon Petty. Back in August, on the 21st, they responded to a structure fire, where their courage and quick actions led to successful rescue of a victim in a life threatening situation. We train for this every day of our lives. Not many times do we actually pull somebody out of a structure. They usually vacated the structure prior to us getting there. So, this act of heroism is a huge part in which we want to make sure that they're recognized for their heroic events, and that's why we're doing that today. Their dedication and teamwork and selflessness embody the very best of the fire service and remind us how fortunate we are to have such heroes serving in our community. Thank you, Captain Thompson, engineer Osterberg, firefighter paramedic Broach, and firefighter paramedic Petty for your outstanding service. In closing, I'll leave you with what I tell our staff when we hire somebody new. No matter what anyone says, just show up and do the work. If they praise you, show up and do the work. If they criticize you, show up and do the work. If no one even notices you, show up and do the work. Just keep showing up and doing the work and leading the way. Thank you. Why don't you guys scoot in right in the center, and then we'll get council and mayor.
The short ones have to go in front.
Come over here, Vio, just follow everybody, get behind them, and then we'll stack in behind you guys.
Thank you.
So, while everyone's making their way out, sorry we're so boring that you're all leaving. No, I'm just kidding. We sure appreciate all of our fire personnel and our sheriffs, actually, and there, we have a few here this evening as well. You know, when it comes down to an emergency, we definitely don't like it when they have to help someone that's in grave danger, but we sure are lucky that we have them all as part of our team. So, anyway, we'll let you guys escape. One of my favorite parts about our pinning ceremony is the little voices of our little ones. I love that, I miss that so much. Anyway, thank you all for coming this evening. So, now, we have actually a proclamation before he goes away, Sawyer, where is he? Sawyer gets his first proclamation as well as being pinned, so. Sawyer, I see his tail, but he's not up here yet. So, you might not know this, but it is Service Dog Month proclamation. So, the San Marcos City Council hereby recognizes Sawyer for National Service Dog Month, and of course, Sandy Fast, his, what do we call you, his dad? His handler? I don't know, you're kind of his dad too. I'm the grandma to my daughter's dog, so. Whereas, K-9 Companions, founded in 1975, created the modern service dog concept and is celebrating 50 years of providing expertly trained service dogs to people with disabilities. And service dogs greatly enhance the independence and quality of life for adults, children, and veterans with disabilities, and their work deserves recognition and support. K-9 Companions has placed more than 8,200 service and facility dog teams across the country, with more than 2,800 active teams and eight regional centers, serving individuals with 65 different types of disabilities. And all dogs and follow-up services are provided at no cost to clients, making these life-changing partnerships accessible to those in need. And there remains a critical need for greater awareness, education, and access to service dogs, with more than 500 individuals currently waiting to be matched with a professionally trained dog. The City of San Marcos recognizes the profound impact service dogs have on individuals, families, and communities, and supports efforts to increase awareness, accessibility, and appreciation for those extraordinary animals like Sawyer and the organizations that train them. We, the City Council of the City of San Marcos, do hereby proclaim September 2025 as National Service Dog Month and encourage all residents to honor and support the important work all service dogs, including Sawyer, give to their communities and make their service possible. Presented this day, September 23rd, 2025. Presented this day, September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. And Sandy, thank you so much for being his handler, if I get that right. But you're so much more than that and for having the idea of bringing Sawyer here to our community. You know, when we have, many of our fire department have to go out and deal with some pretty heavy situations, and being able to have Sawyer to love them and take care of them and be there for them, we really appreciate it. So thank you very much. Of course, and Sawyer. And Kristen Jensen. Where's Kristen? Oh my gosh, okay, wait, what is your dog's name? Alba? All right, Alba, come on up too. We want you to be part of this. My apologies, I wasn't reading my notes, I was so overcome by, so, oh, look, they're friends, they want to be friends. Did you have, did you have something you wanted to say or? Nope? Okay, well then, let's take a quick picture. So do you want me to help you a little? We'll come to you, how about you just turn around and we'll come to you. Sure, no problem. I have another one, yes, thank you very much. Sorry, we didn't have time after our closed session to go over my notes. So I also have one here for you too. So K-9 Companions, founded in nineteen seventy-five, I, I won't go through the whole thing again, but I wanted to present this to you. Okay, no problem, we're gonna go like this. Hi Buddy. You're luckily on the, you're in the right spot, so there's no. Okay, we're gonna move over to you. I'll give you this, Kristen. Is it Alba or Al?
It's Alba, like Jessica Alba.
Oh, like Jessica Alba, okay.
No, I did not name her.
There you go, I'll give that to you. Okay. That's what lead rollers are for. No problem. Okay. Next up, we have, yes, they're still filing out because the rest of the meeting. And next up, we have some champions here this evening. We have Jocelyn Croxton, Daniel Casio, and Avia? Avia's here this evening? Avila, okay, we met before. Gosh, Shalion, and we're going to have you all come down, if you could. Thank you so much for coming this evening. Okay, so I'm just going to read one, so we have one, I'm gonna actually give these to you. So these kids are literally are my hero, and I know that I can speak for the whole council. You've gone through some tremendously tough times and we just want to celebrate you because you are so brave, you're so brave and we're so proud of you. And each one of you has gone through a journey that we can't even begin to understand. And your families are here supporting you this evening, we really thank you so much for that. Anyway, we have certificates of recognition for your incredible strength, your unwavering courage, and your inspiring journey as a childhood cancer survivor. Your resilience in overcoming one of the life's toughest battles speaks volumes about your strength and your courage. You inspire everyone around you, lighting the way with hope, determination, and a heart that never gives up. We recognize your bravery, celebrate your triumph, and stand with you in continued hope and healing. So thank you very much to each one of you. Sorry, I'm a little emotional. I'm a hugger, I'm gonna hug you guys. All right, so now we're gonna take a quick picture, if you don't mind. And really, thank you for coming here this evening and thank you for being so great. I think I have one more proclamation, and that is for, care, um, nope, nope, nope. I think Jocelyn's going to come in and, you know what, I should have actually just given this to all three of you, but if you want to come up here. So, child, whereas every year thousands of children across the United States and around the world are diagnosed with cancer, a life-altering disease that remains the leading cause of death by illness among children. Childhood cancer affects families in every community, including here in San Marcos, bringing emotional, physical, and financial challenges that can last a lifetime. Researchers and medical professionals continue to make progress in understanding and treating pediatric cancers. Yet many types still lack effective treatment options and survivors often face long-term health issues as a result of their disease or its treatment. Courageous children and families facing cancer inspire our community with their strength, resilience, and hope, reminding us of all of the importance of compassion, advocacy, support, and. Whereas organizations, volunteers, and healthcare providers in San Marcos and beyond work tirelessly to raise awareness, fund research, and offer vital resources to families in need. By recognizing September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, the city of San Marcos stands in solidarity with affected children and their families and affirms our commitment to supporting efforts to find cures and improve outcomes for all pediatric cancer patients. Therefore, the City Council of the City of San Marcos do hereby proclaim September twenty twenty-five as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month and encourage all citizens to join us raising awareness, supporting affected families, and advancing cancer research toward a cure. Thank you. Okay, sorry, I'm a little emotional, this obviously is emotional, so I'll give that to you. We won't make you stay for the rest of the meeting if you don't want to. Okay, next up is the National Manufacturing Day. The first Friday in October is designated as National Manufacturing Day and was created as an opportunity to recognize and celebrate the contributions of manufacturing in the United States. California has the largest number of manufacturers in the nation, with representation across virtually all manufacturing sectors. And Hunter Industries, who is here this evening, Carrie Khan, are you here? Don't think you were going to get off the hook. You know what, I, I, I'm with you, I feel, I feel very emotional right now, but it's okay, we're gonna do this together. We got this. Anyway, thank you for all that you do. I don't know if you all know, Hunter Industries here in San Marcos, if you go out and you look at any watering system outside at homeowners associations, probably here at City Hall, I'm guessing it says Hunter on all of it. They do, they're, I think you're the biggest manufacturer of, is it? Yeah, but would it be home irrigation and then industrial, commercial? Yeah, so all of it, I mean, they really do, they're, and they're right here in San Marcos. Hey, we're just gonna own it, you're here in our city, we love you. Anyway, Hunter Industries is a leading manufacturer of innovative irrigation and outdoor lighting, oh yeah, I forgot about the lighting, products headquartered in San Marcos and has actively been promoting National Manufacturing Day and Month in California. Through these efforts, manufacturers throughout California will, in a coordinated effort, help illustrate what modern manufacturing is by participating in Manufacturing Month, California events designed to increase public awareness and advance manufacturing, and are also the great career opportunities the industry affords. Through these invaluable efforts and dedication, Hunter Industries has helped communities and future generations of manufacturers throughout California. We, the City Council of the City of San Marcos, do hereby recognize Friday, October third, coming up, as National Manufacturing Day, as well as October twenty twenty-five as Manufacturing Month in California, and we thank Hunter Industries and all of their partners for their outstanding support in this worthy effort. So thank you very much for being here today. Thank you so much. How many employees do you have now? Here in San Marcos? About eight hundred or so. Globally, about four thousand. Eight hundred in San Marcos, four thousand globally, pretty amazing. Largest employer in San Marcos. Yes. Yes, we appreciate that. NCTD, they had their fiftieth anniversary and we have a proclamation to celebrate. So I think here we have Yoni Cholakova, Cholakova, the manager of service planning, and Sean Donaghy, who is the chief executive officer to receive proclamation. You are here, you got here. Did you come by bus because the roads were bad? Or train? Anyway, come on down if you don't mind, we, we're really excited to have you here this evening. When our meeting first started, we knew there was an accident and a lot of people were running late, so we were hoping that you were definitely on a bus or a train so that you could get here on time. Anyway, I'm gonna give this to you and then I'm going to read the fine print. So, and then I'm going to let you say a few words, so don't be thinking you're off the hook. The San Marcos City Council hereby recognizes North County Transit District's fiftieth anniversary. NCTD was established in nineteen seventy-five and for fifty years has connected North San Diego through safe, reliable, and accessible public transit. NCTD has grown from bus-only service into multimodal system, including the Coaster, Sprinter, Breeze, Lyft, and Flex, but also NCTD Plus, which we happen to love here in San Marcos, which serves millions of riders each year. Their mission is to operate an environmentally sustainable and fiscally responsible transit network that provides seamless mobility for all while achieving organizational and operational excellence. And NCTD is committed to safety, service quality, innovation, and strong partnerships with local communities and stakeholders. NCTD advances its mission by placing customers first, ensuring safety and security, delivering high-quality service, maintaining facilities that support future growth, and securing public investment and fostering leadership and innovation through collaboration. NCTD continues to invest in its people, infrastructure, and future, including the twenty twenty-five transition of bus operations in-house to enhance service delivery and accountability. For fifty years, NCTD has remained committed to sustainability and innovation and equitable access, serving the region with pride, purpose, and a forward-looking approach to transit excellence. We, the City Council of the City of San Marcos, do hereby recognize NCTD's fiftieth anniversary and encourage all of our residents, businesses, and community partners and visitors to join in celebrating your fifty years, almost as old as I am, but not quite, and all of the service that you will continue to provide to our community. And if you would like to come and talk a little bit about what's up next for all of you, we'd love to hear a little bit about that. Sean, thank you.
Yeah, I would just say, we're awful proud that we're at our fiftieth, we don't look a day over forty-five, so that's been a good run. Realistically, when we are up here as an agency, and for me specifically, it's really more about all of the people who make North County Transit what it is. I'm very thankful to have our vice chair Sennella here that sits on the San Marcos City Council and former board member Sharon Jenkins who's here today. The reality of North County Transit is, it's, it's not us. It's every employee who walked through the door for the past fifty years. It's every passenger that ever rode our service. It's every elected official that ever helped guide our agency to what it is today, and we're very thankful for that, and we just appreciate the recognition, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, we'll take a quick picture. Now you're gonna give us a report, aren't you?
We are, thank you Mayor, members of council. It's always a pleasure to be here. Sean Donaghy, proud San Marcos resident, right down the street. So first, I just want to start off by saying what an amazing run of show today before us. The recognition, I'm so thankful for this council's recognition of the amazing people in front of us. And I'd be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to say the absolute amazing partnerships that we have with our local fire departments and paramedics, our San Diego Sheriff's Office that works directly with us, and all of the police that work in all the jurisdictions that we have service in, they're just phenomenal. And we didn't have that relationship, I think. What North County would be would just be a lot different, and so I'm very thankful for your recognition of those individuals today, and it was, it was definitely great to watch. We're gonna talk a little bit about NCTD Plus today, we've been in service now a little bit over a year. It's going very well, we've actually expanded that service into Vista, but we're not here to talk about Vista today, we're here to talk about San Marcos. You know, we have several other iterations of the launch that will happen over time, and I'm gonna let Yoni kind of go over that. But I think the thing that we're seeing is a very positive trend, not only in ridership, but just in the excitement around what it means. We've expanded the zone based on customer feedback. My daughter actually attends Cal State San Marcos. I know she rides the service as well to campus, and so it's just really a great service all the way around. It connects to our Sprinter and our Breeze. We're just really thankful to be able to serve this city, and I'm gonna turn it over to Yoni.
Awesome, thank you. So to provide a quick overview of NCTD Plus, I know you all are very familiar, but this is an on-demand shared microtransit service. is an on-demand shared microtransit service, which began on June 10th, 2024, so a little over a year, as Sean mentioned. It works as an on-demand service, so you can book the same day, or you can do a same-day trip request to arrive by a certain time. You can either do so by the NCTD mobile app, or you can call the reservation call center, which we found that a lot of people are using the app, so we're happy to understand that it's very well utilized and easy to use. The service hours are currently Monday through Friday, 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and then Saturday and Sunday from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. So, at launch, the San Marcos zone looked like this. It was a little under 10 square miles, and we wanted to start small, just to make sure that we could operate this geography while maintaining a wait time that was appropriate for the customers. We didn't want to neglect the customer experience by expanding too much and having a very high wait time. So, this was at launch, but we heard a lot of customer feedback asking for some retail locations, such as the Costco, Walmart, Target, as well as community centers like the neighborhood park, and just some residential areas that aren't well-served by fixed route transit, so we wanted to make sure that we could have that access to make it easier for them to connect to transit. So, in September 2024, we expanded to this purple zone. It was about 13 and 1/2 square miles, and then we received another customer comment emphasizing the importance of the San Diego Food Bank, which we absolutely agreed. It was just outside of the service geography, so we expanded once more in February 2025. This is the existing geography. The nice thing about this service is that it's really flexible, so we have this ability to expand service to where it's needed while also maintaining operational balance. We do still wanna be really careful about the wait time. We don't want to expand it so much so that we impact the customer experience and then actually discourage people to use the service. So, we've been looking at these service metrics really closely and being really intentional about the way that we expand and grow.
Can you clarify the coverage for the San Diego Food Bank? Is the coverage for the existing location or the new location for the food bank?
It was, I'd have to check where the new location is. It was the location that it was at in February 2025 in the industrial center.
Okay, can we clarify if the service will capture the new site?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
That's a great point, thank you. One other big change that we made was at launch, anywhere in the zone, the fare was $5, and if you're riding tour from a Sprinter station, it was $2.50, or for additional riders. In August 2024, we realized this was a barrier to entry for the service, so we decided to decrease the fare to $3 for anywhere in the zone, and then $1.50 for riding tour from a Sprinter station, so wanting to really encourage those transit connections, and $1.50 for additional riders, so we didn't want to impact families traveling in binge groups. And then, also importantly, we also included the youth opportunity pass, so anybody 18 and under can access this service for free. So, since June 10th, since launch, we've hit over 25,000 boardings, which is really exciting. As mentioned, 98% of our bookings are through the app, which is also a huge win for us. We knew that adding a new software could be a barrier to entry, but we're finding that a lot of people feel comfortable using it. We have about 25 requests per rider, so we see people that are using it come back to the service. In terms of a six-month snapshot at the beginning of the year, we have about 2,000 average monthly boardings, which is a really good area that we're at in terms of with wait times. 54% of our trips are pooled, so we're excited about that because it means that we're not, you know, running these vans with only one passenger onboard. We also have an average review of 94%, so people are pretty happy about the service. We did see a pretty significant growth in just one year. In August 2024, we had 460 riders, and now, just a month ago, almost 2,000, so huge increase in growth in just a year of service. In terms of where people are going, we definitely see the biggest use being at Palomar College, both at the college and at the transit center, as well as those retail locations across the city, and also significant ridership at Cal State San Marcos and the Boys and Girls Club. So, people are using it for school, public services, and then, of course, connecting it to the Sprinter, so increasing that accessibility to the fixed route. And to kind of reemphasize this, when we created this zone, we really wanted to be intentional about how to use it as a complement to our existing very robust fixed route services here, and so this kind of shows what is currently operated on our fixed route, as well as the zone, so anywhere in the zone, you can connect to one of these routes that can take you anywhere you need to in North County.
Can you, or will you be getting, I didn't see the school district listed on your prior slide. Will you be talking about the student usage for the high schools? Because I've heard a lot of comments about this.
Yeah, and I can definitely speak to that. We do, we did find that 1/3 of NCTD Plus trips are connecting to schools, but, and within those school-connecting trips, 74% of them are either Cal State or Palomar College. So, we do see a really high usage for students to the high schools and middle schools, but predominantly, it's being used by the two college campuses. The existing high schools and middle schools do have existing fixed route buses, so we're seeing that most of the students opt for those fixed route buses just because of the capacity, but that NCTD Plus still offers a really good complement if they're staying after school, or if they want a little bit more flexibility for when they get there or when they leave.
Thank you for that, because I had heard comments from residents of the lack of availability of rides in the morning, because I was hearing that the high school students were utilizing the service, so I'm not sure if that uses was adjusted, or how we handle that.
Yeah, and I think a big piece of that is education, because one benefit of this software is that you can use the feature to arrive by or depart by a certain time, and so for people that are trying to make an appointment or getting to school at a certain time, being able to use that feature of the software, but then also continuing our education with the schools to emphasize that there is existing bus routes, and for those peak morning bell schedules and peak afternoons, that we always, you know, encourage students to use those bus routes, because it'll be able to accommodate a much higher quantity of students.
I'll just, from a different perspective, we certainly wanna serve as many people as we can with this great community asset, but I kinda like that the students are using it. I drive past the high school to and from where I live almost every day, and I see the buses out there frequently, and I kinda smile to myself every time I see them, so I know that that might put some peak demand on the system, and that's something, as it continues to evolve, that perhaps we can take that into account as we expand the service.
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's really great that the students have many options to get to school, and, you know, many of the students might be living along those fixed route services, but even the students that are beyond that walking kind of distance from a fixed route, they have that option to use NCTD Plus instead.
Yeah, my daughter's out of high school now, but I would imagine that some of those fixed route school buses may not operate after sports practice, or some, you know, theater, any of the different high school activities as well. So, this is another perfect solution to get home.
Yeah, absolutely, that's a great point.
And what's the minimum age for a kid to ride the NCTD Plus without supervision or family?
It is 13.
Okay.
Yeah. And we chose the age of 13 because we looked at peer agencies to kind of ensure safety and comfort for both the operator, but the students and the youth that are riding.
Can you clarify the youth fairs? It wasn't quite clear to me for the benefit of our residents. When a youth ride, asks for a ride, are they asked to present their youth pass, or are they not charged for the ride? How is that handled?
So, it's all handled through the app, so when they purchase their trip, they'll indicate whether or not they're using kind of like a youth fair, which is 100% covered, so that's free, or if they'll be paying cash or like card. And so, there isn't any like on-vehicle kind of validation for them to have to kind of show that. It's mostly just, it's all through the app, so they can comfortably use the app and not have to worry about kind of bringing anything onboard or tapping anything.
And my apologies, but, and I don't recall the last time I used the app. So, does the youth represent that they have a pass, or when they book the ride?
It only represents their age, so it represents 18 and under. They don't need to have kind of a, the youth pass, the pronto card, because the NCTD Plus software is separate from the pronto payment validation process. So, as long as they're 18 and under and they indicate so on the app, they'll be able to book that trip for free.
There is no, it's not like a card or something that you have to present, council member. You just get to, you fill it out on the app, and it tells you, okay, you're free, you don't have to pay cash or credit.
So, then, if I'm understanding, then the driver doesn't ask for any information when the youth?
Yes, that's correct. There has-
I'm specifically asking when the vehicle arrives for the pickup?
Yes, that's correct. At most, we haven't seen any or much kind of like wrongful use of this, the youth category. At most, you know, if someone who is significantly older is using the youth category, the driver will see that, and they can definitely flag that, but we've been seeing youth use it, and so operators haven't had any issues, you know, seeing the youth board, and they see that youth category on their screen.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
So, they show up to the, sorry, so they show up to the location, "Hi, I'm Rebecca Jones." Obviously, I'm not a youth, but if I were, and then I would say, "Oh, I'm Rebecca Jones, I'm here too," and then they would pick you up and then take you.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
And something we want to continue to do, because this is a new service, is continue to measure the success of the service. We're continually tracking the ridership, seeing how compares. We want to make sure that it's improving travel patterns within this area, so we are tracking things like origin, destination data, what kind of first-last-mile connections, because we do wanna measure success, and also how people are able to use the service to get to our fixed route service. We continually track wait times and service reliability. As mentioned, we wanna be careful about those peaks, so we wanna keep a close eye and make sure that our service quality parameters aren't exceeded at those times, and we wanna make sure that this is an efficient service, so having many people use it together. We don't want vans running with just one person onboard, we want them pooled, and to kind of increase that, the car pooling and the efficiency of that trip. And then, we are always also tracking the financial performance to make sure that fiscally this is a feasible operation. We definitely see the value, it's very successful from a ridership perspective, so we really want to kind of keep an eye on how we can make sure that this is sustainable in the long term. And then I'll pass it over to Sean.
Yeah, thank you. We would just note that, sort of in closing, some of the opportunities that we have for us, and I wanna take an opportunity to say thank you to the city management staff, they've been phenomenal every time we've come over to the building and had a conversation about what could be next for NCTD Plus. Cost efficiency, I think, as Yoni pointed out, is a big deal for us. It currently does cost a little more than two times our current Breeze cost per service hour. That's something that we're okay with in our current setting, with, when you see that ridership growth, I think we see a positive trend there, so we wanna try to solve that as much as possible. And service quality, really unable to expand service zones without impacting quality, without sort of managing what that cost efficiency piece looks like. I know we've had a lot of conversations with community members about Santa Lejo Hills and a few other areas within the city that aren't served currently at the moment that we're looking at, sort of full brand, so we'll continue to do that. The future of NCTD Plus in San Marcos, you know, we continue to partner with the city to enhance service delivery and coverage. You know, I think, as Yoni pointed out, we're really looking at these data insights to sort of evaluate opportunities either between the school and a few other things, and I'll give you an example of something we talked about at our last board meeting. We run the 347, which is the route that goes between Palomar and Cal State San Marcos, and one of the things that we found was is that we're probably getting a little more use out of NCTD Plus because there's more flexibility for the students on Saturday, and we really only run that 347 Monday through Friday and then Saturday, so we're gonna move away from 347 on Saturday, and we're gonna really rely heavily on NCTD Plus so that students have more opportunity to get throughout San Marcos. Ongoing community engagement to inform service planning and improvements is a big deal for us. We're really starting to get into sort of online open houses, really find new and creative ways to get out to not only the schools and the students, but the community at large, and we wouldn't be able to do it if we really didn't have the support of, you know, the council and members of the city, so we always wanna take an opportunity to say thank you for that, and we're happy to answer any questions if anybody has any for us.
Thank you so much. You know, as, when I was chair of North County Transit, before you actually came to North County Transit, you know, this is something that we've been trying to do for a while, and finally being able to see it come to fruition and how useful it is, and I have to tell you, I hear a lot from community members, you know, how much they appreciate having the smaller buses, they, it seems definitely more eco-friendly to the community that you've got the smaller, you know, the smaller buses, and, you know, I hear a lot from people saying, "Well, I don't really like seeing the big bus going by and there's no one on it." And to see the smaller vehicles and they're actually filled is really something that everyone, I think, can get behind. And, you know, as being a board member of Sandec, as the primary representative for the last seven years since I've been elected as mayor, it's really great to see that we have this as an option where we can actually put some money into something that we know is working and fitting in people's lifestyle, so we really appreciate that. So, I just wanted to make those comments, because, you know, as someone, I'm in my 19th year in office, it's hard to believe, but to see, you know, how transportation has evolved and really fits our communities better is definitely something that I'm very supportive of, so, and I sure appreciate your efforts on that too, Deputy Mayor. Did you have some comments?
Yeah, just, well, first off, thank you for coming tonight, really appreciate it, and I've learned in my, what is it now, seven, eight months on the board down there in Oceanside at North County Transit, I've learned a lot, and I still have a lot more to learn, but what I really like, and I know that you, I know for kind of a cost comparison, you showed, you know, NCTD Plus compared to the Breeze, but it's a little bit apples and oranges, and the feedback that I've been hearing, the positive feedback, quite frankly, I've been hearing from our residents, is that this really, they wouldn't ride the bus. This is the right option for them, the door-to-door service. They don't, it's that one, it's that last mile, right, to get to and from the bus station that they have not been able to solve, and this solves that for them. So, I really am excited that it's successful right now, and I'm just as excited that hopefully we'll be able to. I understand money is the key to everything, right, but hopefully we'll be able to find a way to expand this throughout San Marcos, but then we, I know Rebecca, you, or Mayor Jones, you heard some feedback from Fallbrook recently that they want it now. Everybody wants it right now, so-
Valley Center, too. Yep.
So, super excited, thank you for the presentation and all the information, and thanks for coming out tonight, and welcome to San Marcos, Sean.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember LeBlanc?
I know you mentioned you have a lot of students who take it. Other than that, is there a key demographic that you see taking it a lot, like senior citizens or anything like that, or is it a lot of just, you know, all types and ages?
Yeah, we do see definitely a lot of apartment complexes are very well utilized, so high-density housing, we see those definitely as hotspots, a lot of the manufactured home communities. We, before launch, we were informed by a citizen, which, see me? That there are 18 communities that were not currently within the zone, and so we wanted to make sure that every single one of them is served, so we adjusted the zone geography accordingly, and we're seeing those be definitely also hotspots, so increasing that accessibility to areas of high density. We've done presentations at some of the senior communities as well, and we're finding a lot of really good use there. So, very excited to see kind of that use in areas that maybe fixed route would be a little bit harder for them to use.
Absolutely. Oh, go ahead.
No, I would just piggyback on that and say, when you think about land use planning as a whole, one of the things I think cities struggle with, sort of inherently, is things we did 60, 70 years ago, and now we talk about, like, we have a pretty good partnership with the folks at North City, and we're really having those conversations about where do we need bus service, either around campus, or how do we connect to North City, and those are built for transit corridors. This really provides an opportunity where, in some of these communities are landlocked, they may fit the definition of being within a half a mile- they may fit the definition of being within a half a mile of a bus line, but that half a mile is not necessarily walkable. So being able to get into those sort of landlocked pieces of the communities that are built around seventy-eight or built around some of our major corridors, I think is a huge win to those communities to either get them to the Sprinter line, get them to a fixed route bus line, or just within San Marcos in general.
Absolutely. I think it's a wonderful addition. I'm glad you expanded the service area because my neighborhood was excluded at first, so it was nice to see, I've seen some neighbors taking it. So it's really wonderful, and I think North City, it will be a, it'll, you'll see even more of a boom once North City residents start moving in. It's a great, just great to have in our city, so thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
I do, Mayor.
Yes.
So I'm going to echo, I think, what's already been said, but I do want to make sure that I convey this to you. I get a lot of requests wanting to know when we are going to expand the service, so I do get that quite a bit. And then the other question that I get, I know the money's sensitive and you just presented the cost of it, but I do get a lot of requests from senior citizens who, even though it's a lower fee, it's still a hardship for them to come up with that fee to be able to pay. So I do get the request to find out, are there ways to cover that fee or to have it waived? So that is something that I continue to hear. And then having said that, you mentioned having received great feedback and making adjustments based on the feedback that you're receiving. So my question is, what is the best way for our residents, for the riders to get that feedback back to you?
Yeah, there's a lot of different ways to do that. They can do that via our customer service group. We actually have the ability to email our planning team and send some of that information in. When we do open houses, please, please, everybody come and share that feedback. That's where we probably get some of the best feedback we get from our citizens. I would say on the paratransit versus the NCTD Plus piece, that's something that we're looking at. All of our vehicles are ADA accessible, trying to find a way to make that available for our team is one of the paramount issues that we're looking at. Part of the difference between the two is that by and large, our paratransit customers are leaving San Marcos, they're going to someplace else, so they get a one-seat ride from San Marcos to wherever it is they're trying to get to, either for a medical appointment or something like that. We are looking internally about what does that look like for our aging population to be able to move around without issue in very cost-effective fashion right here in San Marcos, and that's at the top of our priority list.
Okay, thank you for that and thank you for being here.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate you. Thanks. Okay, next up is finally our consent calendar. We have eight items on it. Are there any items that any council members wish to pull?
Move to approve tonight's consent calendar.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any notes? Seeing none, moving on to oral communications. We have one speaker, Natalie Aguilar, Universidad Popular. There you are, Natalie, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. For the record, I'm Natalie Aguilar. I'm a community educator with Universidad Popular, and I'm here to provide her on-the-record updates and provide information on some of our upcoming community events. First up is the recap on the Emergency Preparedness Fair. So on Saturday, September thirteenth, the Emergency Preparedness Fair was held at the San Marcos Community Center. Universidad Popular sponsored the Big Shaker Earthquake Simulator where community members practice how to prepare in the event of an earthquake. We look forward to collaborating with the City of San Marcos and the San Marcos Fire Department again to bring this event back next year as we strongly believe in the importance of emergency preparedness and want to make this a well-known and well-attended event. Next up is going to be my recap on the Clean Energy Alliance workshops. So we are collaborating with the Clean Energy Alliance to host a series of community workshops in Escondido, San Marcos, Carlsbad, and virtually on Zoom, with other workshops to be scheduled soon. The goal is to get input on community members' energy priorities, experiences as renters or homeowners, as well as inform community members about current CEA programs. Community input will contribute to the formation of program plans for CEA. This past Tuesday, September sixteenth, we held our second workshop in the San Marcos Community Room where we had eighty community members in attendance. We had insightful discussions regarding community members' priorities and concerns. We look forward to more workshops with Clean Energy Alliance. Tomorrow, Wednesday, September twenty-fourth, we will be holding a virtual workshop with the Clean Energy Alliance. We will have a session in Spanish from five to six P M. and in English from six to seven P M. Community members can sign up by scanning the Q R code on our flyer. I also have some copies with me if folks are interested. And then third is going to be a reminder on the Entrepreneur Fair. We are collaborating with the Economic Development Department and business partners to support outreach and participation of local businesses in the upcoming Entrepreneur Fair taking place on October eighth from five to seven P M. at the San Marcos Senior Center. We hope you can join us. And then last is going to be, I'm going to be sharing about our Day of the Dead workshop series coming up in October. So next month in October, we're going to start our series of Day of the Dead community workshops. We will be having various workshops that honor and continue the legacy of our departed loved ones. On Wednesday, October eighth, we start with the history of the Day of the Dead. Next, on Wednesday, October fifteenth, we have a Papel Picado workshop. Then on Wednesday, October twenty-second, we have a Sugar Skulls workshop, followed by an Ofrenda workshop on Wednesday, October twenty-ninth. We conclude the series on Thursday, October thirtieth with a celebration for the Day of the Dead. All events are from six to eight P M. out of our office on Autumn Drive. We hope you can join us. And then I also have flyers to share. Thank you for your time and I hope you enjoy your evenings.
Thank you, Natalie, and thanks again for the Big Shaker sponsorship. That was a great, first time I'd ever actually been on one. And, you know, being at the Emergency Preparedness Fair, I know we all appreciated it. Thank you. Any other comments? No? Thank you so much. Okay, moving on, that's our only public speaker. Moving on to reports, I had Sandec. We have another meeting coming up on Friday. Basically, just updated our Conflict of Interest Code, discussed state of good repair items. We also actually approved that. Performance audits were completed for TDA Transit Development Act, and there was a plan also with the weaknesses, and then the corrective action plans, and then the annual audit report, and then what the corrective actions will be on those as well. And that's pretty much it. And then we have a meeting coming up this Friday. League of California Cities, Councilmember Musgrove is not here. I don't know if someone filled in for him.
You did? Oh, alternate? Did you?
I'm the alternate. We have our annual meeting coming up in two weeks in Long Beach.
Okay. Oh, that's a multi-day event.
Yeah, so that'll be exciting.
Okay. North County Transit District Deputy Mayor Sannella?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And Sean kind of alluded to some of the changes that are going to be taking place down at the NCTD with regards to looking at data and trying to make some changes to the bus routes. We've been doing it all year long, but they've really put a focus on it recently. So we set a public hearing for some announcements. One of them was the three forty-seven, which Sean mentioned during his presentation. That's really the line that's probably closest to us here in San Marcos, the one that they're going to take away the Saturday service between Palomar College and Cal State San Marcos. Breeze Line, three oh two, three oh five, three oh nine, three five one, and three five two. We'll also have some minor changes. We had like an hour presentation on this, so I'm not going to go through it all, but if you do use the Breeze system or the Coaster system on a regular basis, I do encourage you to go to the website at NCTD and kind of keep an eye on some of the changes that are coming. And again, yet, this was last Thursday, but last Thursday's meeting was just a set of public hearings, so nothing has been finalized yet. So if you do use the system and you want to provide some feedback as to how it continues to evolve and become more efficient, I encourage you to come to that public hearing. And then the other good news, we had a representative from, let me look at my notes here, from the governor's office, and in the time, the twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-eight timeframe, our area from kind of Los Angeles down through San Diego into NCTD's area on the Coaster Rail, we're going to be piloting some new clean air trains. And they are, they have a funny acronym, they're called FLRT, but let me find my notes. Do you remember that, John?
Yeah.
Yeah. And so, yeah, so they're like a battery slash hydrogen system train, which that technology must be really getting really, really good to be able to move that much weight. Lot more information to come, but that's going to be exciting because we can have a cleaner system that moves us out and about.
And that's going to be on the coaster line or?
The coaster line.
Perfect.
We haven't got to the Sprinter stuff yet.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. Okay. All right, thank you for that. Okay. Moving on to North County Dispatch, JPA, Councilmember LeBlanc?
We meet in December.
Okay, and then Clean Energy Alliance, Councilmember Nunez?
Thank you, Mayor. We'll meet this coming Thursday.
Okay. Then next up, City Council Business Visits. We had one, yep, there it is, U-Turn North. Not something we probably want to talk about, though it's very important. So it's Behavioral Health Services, U-Turn, which is part of TURN, Behavioral Health Services, a longstanding San Diego nonprofit focused on mental health and recovery programs. It was very interesting, a lot of things I didn't even know, but it was established to serve North County inland, the judicial district right there at Melrose in the city of Vista. U-Turn provides state licensed DUI education and treatment programs to reduce substance-related driving incidents. So it's not just alcohol now, it's also substances. And its mission is to promote public safety and long-term wellness by helping individuals address substance use, strengthen decision-making skills, and rebuild healthy routines. And, you know, not everyone thinks about it this way, but when you have an alcoholic or a drug addict in a family, it affects literally the entire family and then also outside of the family. Actually, my father was an alcoholic, so I definitely know very intimately what that can be like. And so just hearing how they focus on, you know, the whole family and how they are, you know, then I guess it would be engaging with their family and the community is really good to hear. Anyway, their programs include twelve hours, three, six, nine, and eighteenth-month programs, and they're all state-approved for DUI treatment options. Did you want to jump in there, Councilmember? I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Sannella?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it wasn't your typical, it's not real, I mean, they are a private entity and they are a business technically, but they don't provide the normal services of the businesses that we visit. And so it was interesting, but it's a serious program that's very badly needed. If somebody does drive impaired and either gets arrested or into an accident and they find themselves into the court systems, this is required rehab and training that they have to go through. And this, U-Turn, provides this important service. And really, it's about getting people back on track, giving them a second chance. Yeah, getting them healthy, getting them to where they can, you know, do the right things, get back in their car and get to work, get to school, and do all the things that they need to do. And they have their, as I think the mayor was starting to say, they have, you know, three, six, nine, and eighteen-month programs, and that's based off of what the court orders, and a lot of that has to be, is dependent on if it's their first offense or second offense and so forth. Their services are in English and Spanish. They're located off of Ranchero Drive.
Right next to the DMV?
Yeah, right next to the DMV, right there at five seventy Rancheros. They work closely, of course, with the courts, the probation offices, and the DMV. They have certified and registered counselors, so these are really trained professionals that are trying to help the folks get back on the right track. And they have flexible evening and Saturday hours, and they're constantly looking for partnerships. They look for interns, volunteers, if this is something that you're passionate about and you want to get involved, certainly to reach out to our city team here, our city clerk, or you can reach out to Rebecca, Mayor Jones and I, and we'd certainly put you in touch with the leadership there because it really is a good cause and it's a good way to give back. And they already work very closely with the different healthcare programs at Palomar College, Miracosta, and Cal State San Marcos.
And I think one of the things that was really eye-opening too is that many of the folks that work there, they have a unique perspective because many of them have had issues themselves. And so really for them to give back and get into a position where they're healthy and they want other people that have gone through many of the same things as them to become healthy as well, because let's face it, addiction is a, it is a medical condition. And so being able to help other people that are going through the same struggles that they've actually been through is really, it was really great to see just how that brings value to the whole situation, not only for the person that's trying to get healthy, but also for the person that's healthy and wants to help others. So it was really great to see that part of it as well. Anyway, with that, that would be all, oh, any council commentary today? No? All right, well, thank you very much and have a good night. This meeting is adjourned.